To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Council, we have a published agenda. Are the proposed modifications to this evening's agenda? Councilmember Rosepetti?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda as presented. Second?
It's a motion by Councilmember Rosepetti, a second by Councilmember Trenary to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set for this evening. We're to our first citizen comment period. Is there anyone wishing to address the city council tonight? Please step up to the microphone and identify yourself for the record if you could, and you'll have three minutes. You might want to raise that microphone up a little.
That work?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Paradiso and I'm a resident of the Hole Avenue neighborhood. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning of 1083 Hole Avenue from R2 to R3. Upon researching the goals of this rezoning, the change would allow for an over 100 apartment unit building to be built in an area that's currently zoned for low-density, single-family homes. This would neighbor the new Forrest Song 200-unit development. The other day, I put together a petition and walked around our neighborhood asking people if they knew what was coming. Most people had no idea. Every single person that I spoke to was concerned and eager to sign. The people of our neighborhood don't want this rezoning to happen. It's clear this proposal does not reflect the will of the residents who live here and would be most affected by it. Our neighborhood is already underserved.
Mr. Mayor, apologies for interrupting. I sincerely apologize. The discussion item that the individual is speaking to is a quasi-judicial proceeding that would ultimately end up with the council. So the council is unable to hear public comment with regards to this item this evening. There will be a public hearing on...
I've got to find the date.
We will find the date, and we would invite the... before the hearing examiner, and so we'd invite you to bring that public comment testimony to the hearing examiner. Otherwise, the council would have... we can't take public comment on this particular item because they have to serve in a judge capacity later on in the process. But the hearing process gives you the opportunity to be heard, and I apologize for that.
Okay.
We're going to get that date for you, though, and we'll tell you before you leave.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So we'll make sure you all have that information.
Ultimately, you could be a decision-maker in the process later on.
You will be a decision-maker in the process. And so, from a quasi-judicial perspective, we... I don't know if we've gone through this as the full council before, but when we sit in a quasi-judicial posture, we have to disclose any communications you've had related to the topic. And this would be a communication outside the public hearing that could potentially disqualify you from proceeding, depending on whether there was to be a challenge. I don't know... I don't believe this full council, we've done a proceeding.
We haven't had this, you know, yet.
Okay.
Charlie, would it be helpful to just explain the hearing examiner and that process as well, just for their awareness?
Yeah, absolutely. So you... this council has adopted code language that delegates to the hearing examiner the adjudication or evaluation of quasi-judicial matters of this nature at that hearing examiner level or hearing level. Some cities use their planning commission for this purpose. You use your hearings examiner. And the hearing examiner will conduct a full public hearing. But by law, we can only conduct one public hearing, so the public hearing occurs in your city at the hearing examiner level, and that's per your code. The hearing examiner is a professional attorney who would adjudicate over the hearing and make a recommendation to the council for your action. And so when it reaches you, then you are sitting in that quasi-judicial posture, and you are only allowed by law to make your decision based on what was the content of that public hearing. So it protects due process rights of the applicant so that there's only one hearing opportunity where all of the evidence is gathered. And then we are prohibited by law, by state law, from holding a second hearing. But that hearing is a robust trial proceeding essentially, where anyone can come and provide their input on the matter. And I'm not sure if Nick knows under hearings examiner rules the length of time they get, but usually it's more... it's longer than.
Yeah, we don't have a time limit for giving testimony. And I also wanted to note that the hearing has not been scheduled yet, so we are still... we did a notice of application in May. So, and I believe there's a sign posted now, but the hearing date has not yet been set. We are working on our final staff reports and getting that to the hearing examiner. And it should be noted, this is not a city-initiated proposal. This is an application from a property owner.
Okay, and so if you could make sure you give your email address, name and email address of the clerk, she'll make sure that you get communication in regards to this matter as it proceeds.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Take written testimony or... and also verbal testimony at that hearing. So John Reed is standing first.
Yeah, I was just... point of clarification for our city attorney. I was under the understanding that she could finish that as long as it wasn't a public hearing on tonight's agenda.
No, it's a public hearing associated with the quasi-judicial matter is something outside of the scope of your public comment rules, much like the PDC prohibition on speech related to elections. This is another area where when we have a public hearing noticed, it has... the comments need to be in that context, and we can't have a separate public hearing or you considering public comments.
So let me stop you right there.
Yeah.
We don't have a date, so it hasn't been noticed.
The notice of application is what triggers the protective status of communication. So you're prohibited right now from having conversations with neighbors about this application or, you know, any sort of solicitation or...
Let me stop you right there. What has been communicated to council, so if my neighbor did come to me with that, that I would not have that conversation?
That I don't know the answer to, but it sounds like we may have a systems improvement that we could make to ensure that you get that notice.
So I think when I met with all the new council members, we gave you the short course on local planning. It's a recorded video from the Department of Commerce, and I believe that quasi-judicial matters are covered in that training.
The question was more about...
How was I noticed as the council member not to have that conversation?
Civic application.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I'm not sure that we have a notice in place for quasi-judicial.
So, yeah, it's atypical, but I understand the impetus for the question because you don't know what you don't know as far as what you're prohibited from speaking about. So I think there's a systems improvement where we can ensure that you receive notice of the pending application at the time at which that is triggered, and I'll look at what other... my other jurisdictions do as far as that procedure.
Okay, I just... if we could have that by the end of the week out to council, please. I just... it's a bad look for us not to be able to finish that public comment.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Eric?
No, it was...
Yeah, you got your question answered in the dialogue.
You did that. Thank you.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right, just a second.
And I'm understanding this too, because to me, it's like, kind of like on the... like what John says, this is a citizen comment, but yet we have to stifle that for a public comment.
For a public hearing.
For a public hearing.
We're going to have a public hearing, which is a more formal process.
Right, and by law, we can only have one public hearing, and per your code, it has to be in front of the hearings examiner. So, yeah.
But it's different, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, I know it's very counterintuitive to the public comment where I normally don't interfere. This is one of those very rare opportunities where in order to protect the process from a potential appeal primarily by the applicant, we have to stop at this point.
If you want to step to the microphone, you can... you have a question?
No.
So if I keep this from being detailed specifically about that rezoning and instead just kind of bring up concerns about our neighborhood and how Forrest Song is already impacting, is that something that would be allowed?
You just... I think we deserve some latitude here.
Yeah, so it's... It can't be about the specific application for rezon, but speaking about sort of general concepts of density and those sorts of things would be outside the scope of the application.
Okay, I guess I don't know if I can continue to read from my thing, but... So right now, we have Forrest Song coming in, and it's a 200-unit apartment building. We don't have sidewalks that go down our neighborhood. We don't have speed bumps. We have a lot of blind curves that people like to speed around. That has caused many accidents. It's not very safe for families to be walking. We have a dog. We like to walk our dog through our neighborhood, and we're concerned about the new influx of traffic that's going to be happening with that apartment building as well as the apartment building that's coming at the end of the hill. And I'm not sure if this is 100%, but I was told that the apartment building was granted permission to not provide parking for all of the units. And so that's another concern that I have, is where are all of these cars going to go? And so I just don't know that our neighborhood right now is... the infrastructure can handle Forrest Song, let alone something else. And so I'm hoping that there... something can be done to improve the safety of our neighborhood right now.
Thank you for your comments, and we'll be sure to communicate with you as that advances.
Thank you.
Others wishing to address the council? We have another... yeah, we have another public comment period at the end of the meeting. You're welcome to address the council at that point.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Okay, no, I just wanted to... for council, this is the first time in my eight years that this has happened. So I appreciate, John, your concern, and appreciate Charlie looking into it, how we can get noticed on this so we don't step in it again. But this is not something that happens all the time, so, thank you.
Right.
Yeah, appreciate it.
First time I can ever recall it.
Yeah.
In almost 20 years, so.
Request to Charlie, if you could include maybe a sentence that we can give to people to explain that if we do hear from it, we have to disclose that we heard from them, and we may have to recuse ourselves. So we would not be able to partake in the decision at a future time if they inform us about it prematurely.
Happy to do that, yeah.
Because it is hard to explain, and we... I am familiar with this because we had it on...
Right.
And...
Perfect, yeah.
Councilmember Deener, go ahead.
Yeah, and it is... it is counterintuitive because we like to hear input, but there's certain things that we can't, or we may not be able to act on it later.
Exactly, thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to say that for the audience, that when something is ready to go to hearing, you'll see a site plan which will show the infrastructure that's proposed, include parking, so be mindful of that.
And, yeah, we really shouldn't do questions and... so if you want to provide a couple of comment, you're more than welcome to, but... Yes, and identify yourself for the record.
My name is Athenea Walstrom. Thank you for letting me kind of parse this apart with you guys. It's almost as though you're acting as a parliamentarian. In order to not have to circle back to the situation, I'm trying to understand the differentiation that Nick Bond brought up, where he said, as, you know, something along it not being a city planning proposition versus the actual property development thing. I just want to be able to better understand that, and if I need to receive that communication at a later date, but I want to like...
I could briefly...
Audit or something.
I think I can answer that, and I'll... Nick, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
We have annual updates to our zoning maps and comprehensive plan, and many times, those are city-initiated activities. This instance, it's a property owner initiating this and asking for this rezon. Is that not correct, Mr. Bond?
That is correct.
And then that brings up the pickle that Charlotte Archer had.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just understand that differentiation a little bit better so I could find my spot here. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to... this public comment period? All right, anybody online ready? You use the raise your hand feature to address the council?
Well, I have a new computer. And so I'm fumbling my way through, so let me see if I can find...
This is pertaining to public hearings.
Got anybody else there? Online, if they wish to speak, they can use the star nine feature to raise their hand.
Statue.
They have not raised their hand, so we are good to go.
All right, I will close the first citizen comment period, and we're going to move to our consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Fenton to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Go ahead, comment.
Go ahead. Maybe I didn't... I'm out of order on this, but I wanted to remove item E from the consent agenda. We already...
We kind of... beyond that point. And maybe staff can answer your questions.
Just take a look at page 38. I didn't see some specific days accommodating the actions that they were going to be assigned to.
As far as the contract?
Yeah.
We haven't voted yet on the consent items, so.
I'm good with this motion. I'm good.
Okay, you're good, okay, all right. We'll be voting on the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda has been approved. We don't have any presentations, and we have a public hearing this evening on transportation impact fees. This is you, Mr. Bond.
Is this... Is this the public hearing?
Yes.
Sorry. All right, good evening, council and mayor. In 2015, the city of Port Orchard adopted an impact fee ordinance and established traffic impact fees for the first time. The rates were subsequently updated in February of 2021 following the completion of a new traffic impact fee rate study. It is recommended that the city reevaluate traffic impact fees every three to four years to ensure the program accurately captures the proportionate share of growth-related project cost, reflects the most current growth projection, and remains legally defensible. Since the 2021 update, cost estimates for projects included in the city's capital facilities element have increased significantly. Additionally, the city has identified new transportation projects to be added to the list of those partially funded through impact fees. The proposed fee increase ensures that new development contributes its fair share towards the buildout of Port Orchard's transportation system. It will also enable the city to deliver projects more efficiently compared to the current fee structure. The city council is asked to conduct a public hearing on the draft June 2025 Transportation Impact Fee Study and Fee Schedule and Adopting Ordinance. The council previously discussed this matter at its May 20th, 27th, June 10th, and June 17th council meetings and directed staff to proceed with the preparation of an adopting ordinance with a preferred alternative. Under the preferred alternative, the proposed peak PM trip rate is $7,977, which would result in a fee of $7,498 for a single-family dwelling. This represents an increase from the current peak PM trip rate of $6,288.31 and the current single-family dwelling fee of $6,225.43. The draft ordinance includes an effective date of Monday, July 28th, 2025, to allow the permit center adequate time to implement the new fee structure. The staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance and rate study.
I will open the public hearing on the Traffic Impact Fee Study. Is there anyone wishing to testify on the Traffic Impact Fee Study?
And I should remind the council, in case you didn't see it in your email, we did receive two written comments today that were emailed out to the full council and mayor, and both were in opposition to increasing the fee, and one requested a possible delay in implementation.
Do we know who they were from?
Yes.
One was from Robert McGee, and the other was from the Home Builders Association. All right, anyone online raising their hand to testify on this matter? I see no one. I will close the public hearing on this matter, and we will head to our business items. The first of which is item A, adoption ordinance amending the city's transportation impact fee rate schedule. Mr. Bond, I think we just had a staff report on this. Does... do you have any more to add?
I have nothing else to add except that the recommendation now is to approve an ordinance amending the city's transportation impact fee rate schedule as presented.
Councilmember Rosepetti, you raised your hand.
I did. You give me a second, please. I apologize. I'm... Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance amendment, the city's transportation impact fee rate schedule as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Rosepetti, a second by Councilmember Deener, and Councilmember Rosepetti is the motion maker. You may speak first.
Thank you. I fully support this mainly because of the amount of projects that we have coming down the road as Eric was put out in a Facebook posting about how our city is growing and how much infrastructure we have to... we have to do. I would have been for a little bit higher fee because I believe that the impact of growth needs to be paid by the growth coming in, not by the existing citizens of Port Orchard. I know it's high. I know it contributes to a higher cost of housing, but it's not the only cost of housing. Therefore, I'm fully supportive of approving this. Thank you.
Others wishing to provide a moment?
Yeah.
Head, Eric?
Well, I definitely shared Dr. Bond's email, which I really appreciated, on the growth of the city of Port Orchard, especially compared to the rest of the state. That was extremely helpful. I really think that we're pricing ourselves our people out of the city. The utility rate increases, the impact fee increases that we've had in the last couple of years is really making homes unaffordable to live in the city of Port Orchard. It's going to be... The affordable housing is not affordable housing, and what they're building out there, we're just increasing it more and more. And somewhere, we need to find a way that everyone can contribute to it, not just the brand-new homes and people trying to buy homes and trying to get into an apartment complex just to have a place to live. We're talking about almost 20-something percent increase. That's steep. That's really drastic. And I said last time we sat here that affordable housing, we continue to say it, but we're not backing it up by hitting them with the utility rates that were increasing in the last couple of years between the impact fees and utility rates. We're really hitting them hard, and it's really making it unaffordable to live within the city of Port Orchard. That's what I have to offer.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
I... yes, it's actually... it increases to 27% on these impact fees. And I was curious about these impact goes to the parallel trails. What is that? What's that?
Is there a page you can point me to or a project number?
Yeah, it's page 59, where it says the impact fee analysis, and it breaks it down what all these fees go to. And it says the bike lanes, and I get bike lanes and shoulders and widening sidewalks and stuff, but it says parallel trails. And I'm thinking that's more like park impact fees.
No, so when you put a pathway that is parallel to a road, it is adding capacity in non-motorized capacity to the road network? And so those are eligible for being part of your impact decalculation. But if you'll recall from our work-study discussion, the project list identifies the specific projects that make up the fee. So only those fees on the impact fee project list on page 65 and 66 of your project, those are the projects where this money is intended to go towards, and the percentages of the project that are funded by impact fees is shown as part of the calculation. So there are non-motorized projects on there. There's a handful of them.
Right, so are the trails like a walking trail?
Yeah, it can be a grade-separated pathway. It can be sidewalks and bike lanes. How... whichever configuration our plans call for for that particular roadway.
An example would be, as Old Clifton Road from Anderson Hill to the entrance of McCormick Woods, there aren't any sidewalks, and we don't intend to build a sidewalk there. We intend to build a separated trail, which where you could walk and ride a bike in lieu of building a sidewalk right along the edge of the fog line. So that's an example of a project that would... it's on the list that would be eligible as an example.
Right, and I get that, but it's for the builders and the new homes, which are very high. And I'm kind of curious, like Bremerton, I think if we get our new impact fees, we're going to... our impact fees will be higher than Bremerton and almost parallel.
Or it doesn't have impact fees. They use a SEPA process.
Right, well, they're on here, aren't they? I thought, but, right, they do a little different, and it makes it more affordable for their housing over there in Bremerton. But we'll be right up there with our impact fees with Kirkland, Federal Way, and even Bellevue. So that's why I'm thinking, wow, for Port Orchard, we're going to be almost one of the highest cities with impact fees that are coming along if we increase it up to 27%.
If I may, remember, we staff represented alternatives A, B, and C. Staff's recommendation was option A, and the council wanted the more projects, which resulted in a higher fee. And we did a survey, and you guys selected projects you wanted to add to that to come to a compromised approach between A and B. So I'll remind you of the process we went through to get to this point in time. So, Councilmember Morrissey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a troubling, troubling topic for me. I think I've spoke about it at length. Number one, we can't change the process as that's set by the state, right? So the state says we have to go through this process to set these, and we looked at those projects. We had to cut a lot of projects off of that list because we were looking at options one, two, and three. We really would love to see all three of them happen. Again, that's one of these things where we can just decide to do none of the projects, but I don't feel like that's right for our city as well. We use this term, affordable housing. Nobody can really define it for me, so I'm going to throw that out of the window and continue to try and see if something catches on, reasonable housing. Additionally, we found out last... over the past week, our population changes, and I think that's where some of this disconnect happens between state and local government. Being the seventh fastest-growing city in the state, all six in front of us had populations of 3,500 or less, and being the 14th fastest-growing by actual number of people, oh, by the way, all 13 in front of us had populations of more than 42,000 people and were more than double our size. So our city's going to continue to be unaffordable, but people continue to move here, and we continue to need to provide the infrastructure for those people to move here. So while I don't like anything about what we're going to do, I do plan to move forward with voting yes as we're saying yes to the list of projects that we already told the city that that's what we wanted because the initial list... Because the initial list didn't have all the ones we wanted to get done. And when, I guess my question out of all of this then is, when did we last set the transportation impact fee?
I believe it was January or February of twenty twenty one was when the ordinance was adopted.
Twenty twenty one, okay. So, okay. So if we're increasing them by twenty seven percent, some of that's going to be cost of business. And then when you look at just inflation over that time period, there was a year in there that had over nine percent inflation, which takes us down to sixteen percent divided over a couple of years. We're just a hair over inflation. So, um, while none of this feels right, um, it's unfortunately the fact of what we need to do to keep our city moving.
It is one of the few tools that it's provided to us by the legislature to, um, you know, assist us with the infrastructure needs of our community. Councilmember Trenary.
Well said, Councilmember Morrissey. Not terribly happy with increasing costs at all. But as Councilmember Morrissey alluded to, it's been since twenty twenty one since this was the last looked at, reviewed, evaluated, and changed. We've, we've been four years behind us and we're looking for a three to four year process at this rate moving forward before this is looked at again. Our, our citizens have told us time and time and time again, we all hear, we can't get from A to B in this city anymore. Our transportation is, we're way behind. And, and we need to continue to move forward as fast we can, as quickly as we can, and as painlessly as we can with making transportation and infrastructure improvements. And unfortunately, this is the only way that I see that we can do this effectively without increasing the cost to our current citizens as well. So I'm, while I'm not necessarily in favor of this, I will be voting for this process.
You've already spoken.
I was.
Let's see, someone go to Councilmember Deener.
So I, I've been taking some notes, much of which has already been spoken to. I too don't like the jump that this has caused in our impact fees. And as sour as that taste may be, I also plan on voting for it. I think without it, I think we will see more taxpayers bearing the burdens of those costs that it's a shift and it's an unfair cost distribution. We could see delays in our capital projects. And in, in some cases, you could even see without adequate impact fees and disincentive to move to Port Orchard because of the state of affairs of traffic. And I also think that as steep as that increase is, it's also commensurate with recent building costs that we've seen over the last several years. So like I think was pointed out, this is what we need to keep our city moving and, you know, the worst kind of maintenance is deferred maintenance. So, um, I'm all, I'm all for this as reluctantly all for this.
Councilmember Chang, you would like an opportunity?
Yeah, I appreciate the info that we received on the KBA and Mr. McGee, and I understand that nobody likes higher fees. But I, I keep thinking these fees are paid by new people coming to the city and not existing residents. So I know it's not fair to say that all the new people have to pay a higher rate because everyone living here should pay a lower rate, but that is how they feel. I think the existing residents have their rates sort of maxed out and because of the increase in demand and more traffic. And we've heard people say that we probably shouldn't even have any, we have more wider lanes and we know that's not possible. So this is the only way to address that. I think it's nice that the builders are, are concerned about homeowners. A lot of these figures are really high popping, like page ninety six, we were talking about, um, some of the impact fees on retail and industrial. I mean, these are below six figures. So that made my heart stop. But once again, they would continue buildings coming to town. So I believe this is the lesser of two evils by supporting this.
Remember Rose?
Yep, just a, probably not a rebuttal, but the, um, these funds are, are bucketed. These are not, it was alluded that these funds may be used to offset or, or fiscal management by the city. These, these are bucketed funds. They can't be spent elsewhere and they need to be spent on these projects. So, you know, again, with the other council members, we need to move forward and if we don't, we're going to be stuck in the, in the, somewhere in the water and mud somewhere. We can't, we need to move forward.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. These are restricted dollars that can only spend, be spent on these projects on this list. So Councilmember Ward.
Is there a reason that we set utility rates to gradually increase like three percent each year, whatever those numbers might be? But we don't do the same with impact fees?
We, we do have a codified CPI adjustment in the impact fee chapter, so our fees will go up year after year going forward.
So like you said, twenty one, when it was whatever dollar figure it was and now we're going up at the steep rate that we are, you're saying that there was a percentage?
There, there is, as of twenty twenty one, we put a CPI adjustment in place. That is correct.
I'm definitely, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against this. I just want I say for a council meeting is the amount of increases that we've had recently, it's very impactful, very impactful. I'm thankful that life's good in my household. My wife still complains, but, but I mean, it's, it is definitely impactful and we hear it consistently. And it just feels like we, this council will be consistently, maybe it's just timing, right? You know, after COVID and everything else, the ones that are consistently raising, it feels like, um, impact fees. I, I, I can't even go to my parents' house in a reasonable amount of time. I, I understand the traffic and what we need and what we need to do and it takes dollars to do that. I'm not gonna not vote, not vote, I'm not voting no. But same time, I just really want us to consider the impacts that it really has, you know, on, on building in the community and trying to live here and have children that live here and got moved here, get careers here. And every time we do this, it just makes it even more tough to buy a home here. So.
Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
Yeah, and, um, I think this twenty seven percent is a little too high. We could, and I know you say A, B, and C. I was more on the A or A minus. And I mean, seventy two percent from the Kitsap Home Builders Association, it was can't afford a home. And I think we could still get our roads done. We can do stuff. We gotta do it in a, in a very creative way. But to raise it this high is a little too much.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I fully understand that. So when I asked when the last rate was set, it was in twenty twenty one. But there have been increases to that rate since then?
Yes, there have, correct.
Okay. I don't feel like I knew that information going into this. So, um, it's still not going to change because I know how the sausage was made and what projects are still in here. Again, I think my ask is to see more city council members down in Olympia next session to talk through this, right? The issue is we're the fastest growing city of our size in the state in more than one way. I don't believe we're getting the allocated state resources to go along with that, to help us keep up with that so that this doesn't keep being a spiral that we can't get out of. Thank you. Uh, well, and to address, yeah, thank you.
Seeing no further comments, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of approving the ordinance amending the city's transportation impact fees rates, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay. The ordinance is, is approved. We're at item B now, adoption of a resolution authorizing the reimbursement agreement with Kitsap Regional Library Foundation for the Port Orchard branch roof replacement project. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, council members. Previously, we brought to city council the topic of the library roof that is owned by the city of Port Orchard. The city had gone out for bids and we received six bids with the lowest from Coastline Roofing for thirty nine thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars. The library, we've been trying to defer to the meet the repair of this roof because the new community event center is going to be the new home of the library. The library has agreed to reimburse the city for fifty percent. So part of this, this first part of this resolution, the first resolution in ready tonight is to enter into that reimbursement agreement where the city would recover fifty percent of the thirty nine thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars and nineteen cents for the project cost.
Councilmember Trenary.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement with Kitsap Regional Library Foundation for the Port Orchard branch roof replacement project.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Trenary, a second by Councilmember Fenton. Any questions for Mr. Bond on this agreement? Councilmember Rose?
Uh, this may be a reach, but for council, part of the contribution from the library is coming by friends of the library. And I have a interest in that since my work is in the friends of the library. I don't take any money. It's nonprofit. I don't see any, but if anybody would like me to recruise myself, I would do so.
Does anybody wish Councilmember Rose, Fenton to refuse himself?
No, it potentially costs him.
It does.
So it doesn't like that you're getting off.
No, not on this one.
Hey, anything?
No, I just, I, I think my comments go towards the library and just on public record, thanking them for their willingness to participate in this. They wouldn't have to, uh, knowing they're going to vacate this structure. So, uh, and we're going to benefit off of it when we turn around and do something with it at some point. So, uh, I just want to thank them for, for participating. They're good partners.
Okay. Councilmember Deener, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was surprised at the price when I first saw that this was coming at us. And then when I looked at the other bids, I'm pretty pleased with the price. My first thought was why do this now when like you just pointed out, this is going to be an empty building fairly soon and we don't know what's going to happen with it. But seeing that, um, it was thirty nine thousand dollars, it was much cheaper than some of the other alternatives. I'm, I'm okay with this.
Yeah, library was very eager. They, yeah, well, water dripping on books is bad.
Yes.
So, all right, any other council motion?
I just echo what Councilmember Morrissey said because my first impression was what the library is paying half of the cost of the building that they don't own. Nice for us, you know, I thought, wow, the predator library, they've really stepped up. Or the friends have.
All right, any further comments? All right, you'd be voting on a resolution authorizing a reimbursement agreement with Kitsap Regional Library Foundation for the Port Orchard branch roof replacement project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. We're at item C, adoption of a resolution with Coastline Roofing and Construction, Inc. for the Kitsap Regional Library Roof Replacement Project. Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. Uh, so this is just a recap. Um, this is the actual construction contract. The resolution would authorize council, authorize the mayor to approve the construction contract with Coastline Roofing for thirty nine thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars and sixteen cents.
Councilmember Trenary, go ahead.
I might as well do this one too. I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Coastline Roofing and Construction, Inc. for the library roof replacement project.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Trenary, and was that you, Councilmember Morrissey? Okay. Any questions on the roofing contract? Go ahead, Councilmember Chang.
Yes, Director Ryan, I was wondering, is the roof so specialized that none of the local companies did?
So the new rules with the MRC bidding roster is we have to solicit every contractor on the list. So we did hold a pre-bid walk where everybody was invited to come out. There was one local interest. They did not submit a complete bid package. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, you'd be voting on a resolution with Coastline Roofing and Construction, Inc. for the Kitsap Regional Library Roof Replacement Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. We're at item D, approval of the May twentieth council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Go ahead, Councilmember Morris.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the council member, the council meeting minutes of Tuesday, May twentieth as presented.
Was I?
Second.
I believe your motion was to approve.
Was I, is this, Mr. Mayor?
Isn't that what I said?
You said, uh, accept.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, and then a second by Councilmember Fenton. I believe I'll have two. What is the term I'm looking for?
Extension.
Extensions, thank you. I don't like, from Councilmember Deener and Councilmember Warden. All in favor of approving the May twenty fifth council meeting minutes? All, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And two extensions. All right, that completes our discussion, our business items. We have no discussion items. And we have council committee reports. Let's dive into those. Find my, uh, my sheet with those. All right, economic development and tourism, have you met, if you haven't met, and utilities was supposed to be this evening and we did not.
Yeah, we did not meet. We're canceled. Then I believe there's some news that Dennis will pass on during his report.
Probably a staff report, yeah. Finance, you, you met, haven't met?
Nope.
Next week. Transportation, I don't believe I've met. Land use?
No, we have not met. We meet next week.
We meet next week. All right. Nothing to report on lodging tax, sewer advisory, anything to report?
September.
September. Okay. And copy of the council, if they want to report on.
Before you do, I do want to bring up one item on, on the, on the sewer advisory. We've received several complaints because last year, um, a person unloading the RV down by the Retsal facility took out the, uh, the ability of anybody to use the facility to essentially dump waste. They, uh, they being West Sound, um, had to limit the hours when they were there. And we've received several complaints about that. Got a message I'm crafting to the, just to let them know about the complaints. But as I've said to the people, it's not a city facility and it's something that's unfortunate. But it basically took, you know, was harmful to everybody. So they had to do something.
I saw this, Councilmember Morrissey.
Yeah, uh, is that going to be similar? Uh, like, is any of that in our contract with them that we say that it's open XYZ number of dates?
We don't have a contract over that.
Okay.
That's their facility.
It's their facility.
I see.
Actually, it's jointly, they, we have a management agreement with them. They manage that on, we have oversight with the body. So if that wanted to be changed related to that, that would be the SAC committee that would be the place to address that.
And we're going to bring that up in September with them.
Yeah.
So will be addressed.
Yes, it will be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Not necessarily changed, but be addressed.
Yeah, it is available. It's not available after hours when they were having inappropriate behavior.
I feel like I'm missing a bit of the picture. What was the damage that was done to cause all of this?
Um, I can't remember. Go ahead, Eric.
Cameras, gates, fencing. Uh, they just backed up and destroyed the whole, the whole facility.
RV.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
They weren't sued or held by?
They couldn't identify it. There was no plates.
Correct.
You know, could identify, et cetera. No. And they left.
It's unfortunate when a bad actor, if there were anybody else, that's, that's really unfortunate. Copy of the council?
I don't have the notes. Do you have the notes?
We'll send them out.
Okay.
Okay.
We heard from four to five people. It started with a low rate. We think everyone had a Fourth of July hangover.
It was on the fence, I mean.
Fair enough.
But people did come in.
Okay. I'm going to jump into the mayor's report. Now, lots of good stuff here. ABC conference, I think there's about four of us that went. My takeaway, I came back really excited about the session I went to on Public Works Accreditation. I wanted to tell Dennis. Five of us did five.
Janine.
Oh, Janine attended, that's right, too. So, that's right. Public Works Accreditation. And I go running into Dennis' office to tell him all about it and he goes, yeah, I know, we're doing that. I, if we start a process, he's going to a conference later this summer, actually, to, to learn more about that. But it's, it's going to be the next step in our asset management process. And so I learned a lot about it, was really excited about it and Dennis already knew about this still. And we're, we're begun that, that journey.
We get some of those fancy stickers we see.
Yeah. Yep, we, we hope to have those soon. It's a couple of year process. You're going to get a, a, an update and presentation by, right, Fergus, Fergus Miller next week on the community center. I order, so, I don't, I got the special chair tonight. I don't know which one you swap with me today. I keep having to raise it up.
Did we get some new chairs?
So I've ordered one new chair.
Oh.
If everybody approves of the chair. I think we're going to have some asset tags on them, because there's a few things that are happening. We get new chairs in here, and somehow we always get old chairs here, so I don't know whose offices they're ending up in, but another thing that's happening is these are being removed from here, and when they travel down the stairs, it's kind of tough on the shock absorber in them. So I think we're going to have to maybe have a policy that these stay up here. They're probably going to be different than these, so that we can identify them, have some asset tags on them, so. Anyway, I've got one coming. Hopefully it'll be here by the next council meeting, and if you guys like the chair that I picked, if not, then it'll be somebody's office chair, and we'll, we'll try again, but I, we need something a little more durable and a little more distinctive than the rest of the chairs that are around the hall, so that.
But not too attractive.
But not too attractive.
Pink.
So, anyway, I've got some nice, I talked a little bit about the Marcus Whitman students that came and visited, and I got staff a nice thank you letters from all of them, really appreciate the students. And one in particular, it was a leadership class, and the young lady that was facilitating the meeting, we were all down here on the floor, she sat up here at the dais, and she had the gavel, and she, in her thank you letter, she really liked having the gavel. She was.
So does John, when he's.
Yes, John likes to do. All right, had a nice meeting last week with Emergence Association's Board of Directors, giving up an update on the Bay Street reconstruction process and our communication plans. Josh Johnson attended the meeting with me. And I, we agreed that I would circle back and fall as our, you know, plans become more concrete. We know timing on the funding, all the things associated with it, that we really do all best. We intend to go construction in 2026 on the road with a fallback schedule in 2027, if we have some funding delays. I told you that I would circle back with you on three different water system improvements that are in Underworks. First is the old clip in Intertie, request for proposal on the design or out of the street. It closes on July twenty-first, and we have applied for a $5 million loan for the construction of that Intertie from the Public Works Trust Fund. For when the design is completed to build the Intertie. The Well Eleven Stream Flow Augmentation, remember Well Eleven is capable of producing more water than we're allowed to pump right now, and we, once we complete a stream flow augmentation project, we'll be able to pump more water out of that well. Dennis has a meeting scheduled with Bremerton City staff later this month, because they have a stream flow augmentation process project also in the same stream, and it seems logical that we would partner in that, in one project versus two. And then the City South Water Tower Re-Revitalization Scope has been developed, and now we're waiting on pricing proposals, so more to come up there. You know, we talked a little bit earlier about that data that Nick, I just want to put some perspective to this and the impact, you know. And Nick and his team, and he's going to talk about, touch on this later, this week, today was day two of the process improvement program we've started, and that's just the beginning, and I, and I think there are some resource issues there. I think there's some things that we can do to, you know, improve processes in particular to that small business person that this is foreign to, or that average citizen who walks in and wants to build a carport or a garage, and that, that, that portal is something they've never seen before. It's very routine to somebody who does construction all the time, and I think we can, there's more we can do to, to help in that process. But in that data, that you spoke to, you know, the thirteenth ranked city was Linwood, who also approved by a thousand people, like we did. They have, they have similar growth to Port Orchard, and a similar amount of development activity. But Linwood has a population of forty-two thousand, five hundred, and an FTE count of three hundred and eighty-five employees. We have one hundred and eleven. So the simple answer is, we need to hire more staff to improve the process, but Linwood has a general fund of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. We have a general fund budget of twenty million dollars, so it's not just money. So this is a complicated problem. We're working very hard to make improvement, but I just wanted to put some, some numbers and data, additional numbers and data to what Nick presented. So from our council meeting, minutes in the past, fifty years ago, nineteen seventy-five, the city council passed a dog leash ordinance, so for nineteen seventy-five, you didn't have to have a leash for your dog. In nineteen seventy-five years ago, nineteen fifty, the city council discussed a meeting held with the Bay Street businesses regarding the creation of a, of an improvement district. We still talk about that today. So, and a hundred years ago, remember us talking about the city council was seeking proposals for steel water reservoir, this is a hundred years ago, remember, or to build a wooden reservoir with treated, creosote treated wood? Remember that? And so at this council meeting a hundred years ago, bids were opened on the water tank project, and the low bid for a steel tank was six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. The wooden tank with creosote was thirty-eight hundred dollars, a difference of two thousand, five hundred and fifty. And the matter was transferred to the town engineer, so we didn't have a city engineer at the time. We, the town had somebody that we contracted with, and to, and to look into this further and provide a report to the city council with the award being made on, at July, July thirty-eighth meeting. So I didn't want to have a cliffhanger tonight, so I had Janine go look and see what the city council did on July thirty-eighth, a hundred years ago. And let's go across the room. So what, what do you think? Did he go steel or wood?
Steel.
I'm hoping steel, because maybe the engineer knew what creosote would do to treated water.
But it's twenty-five hundred dollars back then.
I know.
Brett, what do you think? Brett, steel, wood? What, what'd we, what'd we do a hundred years ago? Steel?
I would hope we did steel, but I have a feeling we did wood.
I would say it's best if this is a community is in marine, marine environment, I would say creosote.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have reached that wood.
Creosote.
I would have said creosote, too. We made the right decision to go with steel.
Nice, nice.
I have no idea where that. Gosh, spend enough time on this, just finding out what we did. So, anyway, that was a fun fact. All right, that ends my mayor's report, and I'll go to department yet. It's Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. Just a couple utility updates. So some great news, so the Marina Pump Station, as of last week, we are officially pumping sewage waste through the pump station. We have gone through our window of five to seven days to make sure that we didn't have any bugs, and bypass equipment will start to be disassembled this week. Our staff, our staff engineer Chris Hammer is working closely with the port. Our main priority is to start shrinking that site and making more parking available for visitors to downtown. So big priority, it's tracking. We should be all wrapped up early this fall, so that's on time.
Congratulations.
That's, I, I drove by today, though, and I saw this very large antenna. And it got me a little worked up today, maybe I shouldn't have, and so Dennis and Darren, I made a trip down there, and I, I think when this is all done, that antenna might need to turn into a flagpole. It sticks up quite a bit for the communications with. It is vital infrastructure.
But it.
I, I, it almost looks like a power masthead, but it's not. So, anyway, we got to wrap, we can't mess with the project at this point, but when it's all done, I think we're going to talk to you about maybe putting a flag, turning that antenna into a flagpole, so.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
While we're still on the Marina Pump Station, have we ran the generator? It's working on generator backup?
Generator is operational. I know people are eager to hear about it. I will get that scheduled and also trying to get a tour once it becomes more friendly for visitors.
Well, I had another thought after our last meeting and talking through that. How does that generator run?
It is a diesel generator.
And how do we transport diesel to that in the event that we have an issue?
It's got, it's got a fuel tank on it.
Well, that'll run out at some point.
It does, and we do have service tanks, small ones, and we are also working with interlocal agreements with local partners to have, if we have another power outage, that we will have mobile service come there in the event of emergency.
And have we been down that road? I just, you know me, going down these paths.
No.
We've been down that road to find out, like, we get preferential treatment because we're a city providing a critical service, or, okay.
Yes, yes.
We have an IRA with Kitsap Transit.
We are working on that, yep.
Yeah, so they have, because they transport diesel to their south face, they don't have fueling facilities there, they bring it there. So they have a truck that's in the, in the area.
They wet fuel.
Cool, perfect.
Yep, if, if there's snow on the ground, they're not running as many buses. They also have a similar agreement with Kitsap County.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment, walked down there on July fifth, and it was really noticeable how much work had been done. And the prior structure being down just opens that viewpoint up so much, it's really commendable. It's, I know it's not finished, it's still work in progress, but it's looking good.
I will pass that on to the staff that's been working on it, appreciate it. So just to update Well Eleven, so Wells one, two, and three as part of Well Eleven project. They have been decommissioned, two of them are decommissioned, and one is now a monitoring well, so that phase of that project is wrapped up. And ironically, we were talking about our growth in our city. We recently have been doing some stat updates in our asset management system. I previously shared our customer service changes that we made and how we're recording those, and haven't heard any negative feedback from our public, but interestingly enough, we have, last year we recorded four hundred and forty-four customer service requests for the year. We are at four hundred and thirty-six through the end of June, so significant jump. And additionally, we had three hundred and five internal requests, so things that staff are identifying, recording, reporting or interdepartmental requests. The most interesting fact is we had not updated our stats for our lane miles of road. We measure by centerline miles. You could do it several ways, there could be lane miles or centerline miles. I'm just talking about centerline miles just for the sake of argument today. Previously, we had seventy-six miles recorded, and we have jumped up to eighty-point-five centerline miles, so that's significant, that's significant growth, that's a few years worth, that's not one year worth, so. And that is all I had tonight.
Mr. Bond?
Well, just back to the population growth discussion, I don't think anyone actually said the numbers, so I'll announce that OFM has reported that we are at nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty residents as of April first of this year. Those numbers came out at the end of June. And the surprising thing in what is in the worksheet that I receive every year is our vacancy rate. That actually reflects just over a ten percent vacancy rate, so we've actually have houses that if we got to a more normal vacancy rate, without adding any houses, we have even more room for people to move in without any construction, and of course, we have plenty of construction underway. The mayor did mention our lean process improvement. The state auditor's office has been here for the last two days, and we are going to wrap up tomorrow, and so we've been going through mapping our permit process. We're mainly looking at our single-family residential construction projects as a, as a process, and we're hoping that that process will translate to other improvements in other areas of our operation. We've, we've identified all sorts of low-hanging fruit, some more complex solutions, and we're going to focus on kind of working through some of the more complex solutions, and we'll be reporting to you at your second meeting of, your second regular council meeting of July in two weeks on the, the results of that process and what we learned. I also wanted to share that the pre-approved ADU project, we have just today received the second set of architectural plans that are now going through the plan review process, so they still have to get reviewed by our building department. We may go back and forth on revisions, though hopefully, after the architect went through the first round of review, we won't have any of the same mistakes as, as that first round, and it'll be a relatively light review with few revisions, and then we can hopefully get those ready for public use by the fall. Finally, I wanted.
Is anybody? Permit with one of them?
We, we have one person who is pretty actively looking at building a project up in the Givens Park neighborhood. They, they were already looking at doing an ADU, and I think this made it easier for them, and they're, they're now looking at using one of our plans.
Nice.
The last announcement, at next week's work-study meeting, we, the council had previously asked to revisit the multifamily tax exemption topic, and so that is a discussion item on the work-study agenda. I did want to point out that there was an article on that in the Kitsap Sun today, if you haven't seen it. I'd recommend taking a look at some, some good information and a primer for our discussion next week.
Thank you. Sergeant?
Thank you so much. Just one case to update you on that we're tracking that I thought was of interest. The city of Kirkland is being, is currently being sued by a property owner, a waterfront property owner. Two property owners were having a dispute over the placement of their fence, and one of the property owners asked the city to intervene on a code enforcement basis, to measure where the fence is and to determine. And as we often do, when there's a private civil dispute between neighbors, code enforcement does not participate, because that's a civil dispute. The reporting property owner is suing the city on the basis that the city should be ordered by the court through what's known as a writ of mandamus. There's two forms of writs that can be issued, a writ of prohibition, which stops an agency from doing something, and a writ of mandamus, which mandates you do something. So they're demanding that the court order the city to intervene and utilize its code enforcement authority in that context. And the reason I raised this case is it has significant potential impacts if on appeal, the Court of Appeals agrees with the property owner. The property owner lost at the trial court level, but this is now up on the Court of Appeals, or at the Court of Appeals, Division One. So we'll continue to track it. It would be hugely impactful for the resources that you have as a public agency if you are now ordered by the court to utilize your code enforcement power to intervene in, in civil matters whenever a demand is made. So potential big fiscal impact to cities.
Were there special circumstances in this particular block line dispute?
Not that I'm aware of, no. It's, it's simply sort of the, the petitioner, the, the property owner, who's now the petitioner on appeal, is using a loophole in the writ of mandamus statute that says you can use it for very broad purposes that are what's the term, discretionary duties, as opposed to sort of mandatory enforcement of, of the law, or mandatory enforcement of, of non-delegable duties, so, yeah.
My ward, yeah.
Was, were they asking the city to make a determination on a survey, to survey, or be a determination on a survey?
It's unclear whether the city was asked to survey, but I believe they had competing surveys, and so the city was asked by one of the property owners to side with that property owner and enforce as to the location of the fence.
That's crazy.
Right, absolutely.
You do that. You better start increasing your staff.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yep, that's why it's a keen, of keen interest, and the Amicus Committee that I chair will be weighing in on this matter, because it is so potentially impactful, so, thanks.
All right, Deputy Chief Brennan?
Thank you, guys. It's been a busy few weeks with events in the city, if you guys have noticed, which is big, impactful on us in law enforcement and in Public Works, and I would like to say it was very successful. I mean, a lot of our staff came in on their days off and to be there and work in the community, and things went in successfully. Always things we can learn from, but great help from Public Works, and making sure, working with us and working with event holders, everybody that went through stuff. So we had, I don't know what the last meeting you guys had, I would say we had a cool parade turned on through, we had the fireworks we went through, and we have another big event coming up, and you can work on. So that's great to hear. We have two officers about to graduate early August, so that's coming up from the academy, so it'll be nice to get them out and about. They're doing a bunch of testing today, this week, it's a big test week, so great to see and hear how they're doing. But otherwise, we're just getting ready for the next project to come up this summer, and.
Go from there.
Thank you.
Mustangs on the waterfront, I think that's coming, that's the next one. Ms. Wallace?
I'm just working on documents, as you know, with Natasha here for the last couple of meetings, but she's still working during the day and getting caught up on some of our old records, tasks that we need to do, including maintenance. So now that Janine and I are fully staffed, we're hoping to get some of these older projects off our plates and move forward, so we can prepare for the fall season, so. Events are over for us, which is a good thing. Processing those events and getting them out is, um, challenging and a lot of time. Let's see what else. I think that's all I have to share.
All right, with that, we're to our second citizen comment period. Let's just address the council.
Do we want to do Noah?
Noah, do you have anything for a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, I do not.
He can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
No, he can't hear you.
He, he may not be saying anything.
I am saying important things, but I do not have a, mayor, can you hear me?
Turn you up on mic.
Nope.
Is he muted? I thought my sound was off too, I could do something.
We'll have to catch him next time.
We'll catch him next time, okay, thank you, mayor.
All right, so we're to our second citizen comment period. So if you'd like to step to the microphone, identify yourself, the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Athena Wallstrom and I live on Hole in the area directly affected by the Forest Song apartment development. Having already noticed the increased pedestrian traffic from the Dock Minor housing development, I spoke with planning staff when Forest Song was first proposed and learned that sidewalks are only required within five hundred feet of a new development. The increased pedestrian traffic is already quite high and Forest Song is still being built. I've lived here nearly twenty years after moving from Southworth. While development has been minimal in that time, I appreciate the city's efforts to improve housing access for rezoning and pre-approved ADU plans. However, in just the past few years, a subdivision on Dock Minor Lane and now the Forest Song apartment complex have been added while our roads and shoulders are literally bursting at the seams. Hole Avenue is frequently used as a detour during infrastructure work on Tremont or events downtown. When this happens, the road becomes even more dangerous. A car recently hit a tree near twen- ten thirty-five Hole Avenue after failing to make a turn, no inclement weather. My neighbor has to install and reinstall a blind corner mirror that regularly gets knocked off due to its proximity to the road. A car once hit a telephone pole in front of my home and another even hit my house due to the same sharp blind corner. During the two thousand seven dual king tide and rainfall event, this road flooded heavily with ongoing habitat loss, loss near Dock Minor and Forest Song. We've lost natural systems that help manage runoff, which will inevitably disrupt marine habitat, infrastructure, habitat. Infrastructure improvements along Hole from Sherman to Hill are badly needed, including wider roads, continuous sidewalks, and better stormwater drainage to protect the integrity of the hill looming over Port Orchard Boulevard. I've tried to organize walking groups in the area, but safety concerns, especially the continuous and repeated blind corners and hills, led to an alternative route being chosen. Rerouting is not an option for residents between Tremont and Port Orchard Boulevard that use this walkway. Just last month, I met a neighbor walking in the middle of the road with a stroller because there were no sidewalks and no shoulders on the uphill side and nowhere to deviate otherwise. Many pedestrians are forced to zigzag between the street sides just to stay safe. I urge the city to investigate and implement enhanced infrastructure on Hole Avenue, facilitating the safety of mixed use between pedestrians and vehicles like, including widened roads and continuous sidewalks from Melter to Hill. Thank you.
Your comments, appreciate you being here tonight. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council? You identify yourself for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Matthew Paradiso, I live at ten twenty-five Hole Avenue. Uh, I came to say, or bring up the same concerns about Hole Avenue. Um, I walk my dog every day up and down the street, I talk to all my neighbors, a lot of us have children, uh, kids. Uh, speeding is a major issue going up and down Hole Avenue as well as traffic. Um, just with the already increased traffic and potential to increase more, uh, I would just really like to see something to make our roads safer, either sidewalks, speed bumps, um, or something along those lines. Uh, but yeah, that's really all I have to say about that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comment this evening. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Anyone online, you can use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting. Being none, I will close the second citizen comment period, which is good of the order. Anything, have anything to share?
I have a long list, so I appreciate, uh, councils. Um, first, Dennis, more of a question, uh, the vacate housing coming down, uh, do we have a timeframe on that yet? Because we talked about summer, fall.
So I did meet with, uh, Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife last week with our consultant, I think that was last week. Um, so they are very supportive of the project. So we do have our CIPA that we work, updated CIPA checklist that we worked with Stephanie and Nick's office with. Uh, that process is done, we should have our HPA from Fish and Wildlife any minute. Uh, we did receive the, uh, first, the, the final draft with a couple edits I need to make of the spec. So as soon as we have that HPA in hand, it is going out on the street for competitive bidding.
Okay, thank you.
And just a reminder, that is just taking the structures down, the pilings themselves will come down later.
No, I understand, thank you, um, so.
It's a hydraulics permit?
Yeah, a couple other items, mayor. Um, so there's a meeting, um, McCormick Woods is having a coffee with their board. Uh, I'm unable, Eric's attending, I'm unable to attend because I'll be on the road for the, uh, this is Seattle Portland bike ride, if some, another council member would like to be there, it'd be appreciated. Uh, I believe it's at nine o'clock, let's see Eric for more information. Vote or registration, it's that time of year when I get on my high horse and please ask people to register to vote. Off-year elections are notorious for having low turnout and it'd be awesome if the city continued, uh, to lead the way in voting. Uh, lastly, or actually two other things, uh, one, uh, we've keep talking about affordable housing. At some point in time, you know, talking about all the components that go into a house, uh, fees and stuff. I think that we're like, uh, the story of the six blind men with the elephant seeing different things, different ways. Uh, I would like to propose, uh, if the council agrees, trying to have a work study about what is affordable housing. When we had, uh, when I talked to, uh, Hattie, his biggest cost, uh, according to the chair was land. Uh, it had nothing to do with the building, it had everything to do with the land. So, uh, I would like to at least, uh, ask the mayor to, uh, poll us and see if we could have a discussion about what is affordable housing, what we think is affordable housing. And, uh, when the builders, uh, you know, uh, continue to build, uh, even though they say it's not affordable, I, I, I do have some, not issues, but I have some questions about it, so I'll leave that. Then my last good for the order, I had several phone calls, uh, about why we were having, uh, fireworks on July 5th, uh, when, uh, July 4th, they got the same amount of fireworks, uh, from their neighborhood and then had to, uh, listen to the city's, uh, uh, celebration on July 5th. And I think that might be worth considering that July 4th is July 4th and maybe that's when the city should have, uh, you know, proved its, its show and not have an extra day. Uh, the people were affected both by the Manette Bridge blast the week before July 4th, neighborhood celebration in July 5th, and I think they have a valid point.
Yeah, your challenge to that is, is it's a nonprofit raising the money and it's more, they're struggling to raise the money to have the event.
Yeah.
To begin with, and July 4th is more expensive.
I understand that.
On a different day.
So there's some power techniques out there.
Yeah, so, yeah, you know, the best thing we can do as a community is support Fountains of Fun and allow them to, to raise enough money to, to do it on the Fourth, the Fourth of July.
I know, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying is maybe we help out that way.
Yeah.
That's, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Echo that, but it seems like Fountains was so pleased when they did it on a Saturday the previous year. So they wanted to do it on a Saturday, but now they're bringing up the festival, which is interesting.
Yeah, it, it's, that's one element to it. I, I, I will say being a, and you and I are residents downtown, when the event, when the fireworks are on the Fourth, it's much more impactful downtown because everybody brings, everybody doesn't live downtown or even in the city, brings their personal fireworks downtown Port Orchard to watch the display and like their, their personal fireworks off down here. Um, we don't seem to have that, that is, is much or, or when, on the Fourth, when that display isn't there. So there's pluses and minuses to it.
Not disagree.
Um, other, good of the order, go ahead.
Please, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, I too have a list, so, uh, thank you, uh, for in advance, uh, for that. Uh, one, I just want to point, it's not the city's fireworks, it is another organization that puts that on. Similarly, I had to hear from some folks around, uh, American flags being put out downtown and the city's lack thereof, and I have to remind folks that those flags are not a city operation. They are handled by, uh, organizations outside of the city. Um, with all the Fourth of July hoopla, uh, I'd like to say, uh, thank you. I did took the opportunity to tell, uh, Chief Fawcett this morning, uh, Deputy Chief and, and team, just go out and shake a hand of a first responder, uh, they had a big weekend, uh, and a big week. So, uh, thank you for all the hard work. Um, you know, you have the same amount of people, oh, uh, fifty-one weeks of the year outside of that. And I know, uh, there's some added re- capacity issues, uh, in this, uh, week. And you guys do it flawlessly, so, so thank you. Additionally, the mayor talked about a group of us going to the AWC conference. Uh, thank you to the city of Kennewick for graciously hosting us, uh, and putting us up with us, uh, for a week. But there was a ton of great stuff. And so I just, one, want to make sure that all of you hear this from me, that I think it would be great if we could all, seven of us, be there. Um, I don't know if that means to our budget, but I think the, uh, uh, stuff that I took away, uh, is well worth it, including a couple of things I wanted to just bring up tonight, uh, one being around AI. We've had extensive conversations around AI. I think I was in two AI-centered breakouts, let alone other breakouts that, that talked about it. There is shadow AI going on at the city of Port Orchard. There's shadow AI going on at my business as well. It's a fact of the matter, if people are using it, whether it's sanctioned by your organization or not. What I'm here to say is I would like to see in a short fashion, a full policy around the use of AI at the city of Port Orchard. There is already ongoing litigation in other cities, uh, and we want to make sure that, uh, we've addressed that. So I, I, I'd like to throw that out there.
And I, I can share, I came back with those same concerns and it was assured by our, uh, IT department. They are work and involved with the working, I shared with them the presentation that we got and the, uh, they are involved. It's ACIS is the, uh, IT group, working group, and there's, it's, there's, there's a statewide process going on. We're participating in that and developing policies.
Excellent, there are existing policies out there. I'd rather have something in place and, and it, even if it's not the final version, uh, uh, be- before then. Uh, to, to where there's actually a county in Wisconsin that has started their own AI for government business and is now making profit selling this to, to other government en- entities. Uh, so, uh, that's one of them. Uh, lots of great information that I'm sure we will make sure and get out, uh, around FIFA as well. Uh, but another big topic that I came across that I'd like to bring up at a future, uh, study session or, or bring to company was around short-term rentals and what it's doing to our, trying to get rid of the term J, so, uh, uh, pardon, reasonable housing as opposed to affordable housing, um, as well as, uh, how not addressing it today can compound our issues moving forward. So I think there's some, uh, short-term rental stuff that we'll want to talk about. Um, and I'd like to also petition, as a petition to get that on a work study, uh, coming here to you. I think that's all the high-level stuff, thank you.
Councilman Ward?
Yeah, um, I'm a big short-term rental fan. Um, but, uh, I'd like to say, uh, Saturday, I think at ten o'clock in the morning, Sarah Butler is doing downtown cleanup. And so anyone who would like to help out, probably between roughly ten and one, um, just message me and I'll get you, uh, contact with her and how you guys can help out, uh, between ten and one o'clock. So last, um, few months ago when we did it, that's when all the planter boxes got planted and Lowe's donated all the plants and all that good jazz and, um, a lot of people out there helping out and cleaning and sweeping and doing all that, pulling weeds and it really helped a lot. And, uh, this Saturday, um, they're doing it again, so that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Patton, go ahead.
Yeah, um, and also this Saturday is the night market and there's all kinds of venues that have great stuff going on downtown and it's from six to ten for the night market. And then also I will do council with the coffee, August, the first Saturday in August.
I'm available for that if there's still a slot.
Mr. Mayor, can I sneak a second quick bite, uh, for the rest of you as well? I learned about Facebook and what we can do and can't do, um, and there's a disclaimer that I put on my personal Facebook po- page that I think all of you should look at and think about adopting for your own personal social media.
Are we going to tell us what it is or?
Send it to Brandy for December.
Go look at his page, man, go look at my page.
It's already on my page.
Okay. All right, anything else for the good of the order? We, we, we're not taking off yet.
Nope.
We've got an executive session planned for this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I did reach out and right now I'm gonna, uh, sit out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. So we are going to have a, an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty point one one O related to a real estate matter. And, uh, Councilmember Deener and Councilmember Warden will not be joining us and we're gonna head in the back room. And I would think this is gonna take fifteen minutes and no action will be taken after the meeting. So I will come back and adjourn the meeting after the executive session.
Yes. Here's the J.
I'm gonna run to the restroom real quickly.
Oh, I don't care. But if I crack. Lots of.
Yeah. Have you heard any? It's.
I'm sorry.